I want to thank everyone for coming out of the house. And welcome back to our special guests this evening. Also, welcome back, this is Pat Page. And this is our March workshop. As you know, those of you who have been here before, understand that our workshops are designed to facilitate more discussion on topics that will be in place for our voting meeting, which is next Tuesday. So this evening, we've got some interesting presentations here. And I'm going to turn our agenda over to Dr. Phillips at this time.
Thank you all for coming out. First thing I want to speak about is the stop-arm cameras that we do have on our buses. I want this to get clearly known in our community. We now have stop-arm cameras on our buses. I want to thank the board for taking the steps to provide this extra measure of safety for our students. If you drive past a stopped bus with the red lights flashing and the stop-arm extended, you will be caught on our camera. State Bill, or excuse me, Senate Bill 1098, signed by Governor Wolf, has made it possible. Why is this such a big deal? We had one of our students hit by a car that raced by one of our buses not too long ago. The red lights were flashing and the stop-arm was extended, but the driver did not care. Thankfully, she is still with us. I want to recognize some very important people here with us tonight that were directly involved with supporting this legislation, or will be involved with the enforcement of it. Unfortunately, Jellicie could not be here with her mom, but she was the girl from Lorraine that actually was in the incident. I was just shared by Representative Maloney, another incident that he had with one of his family members. So this is not exclusive to Exeter. This is not exclusive to other districts. It's happening everywhere. It's happening way too much. So I want to recognize first District Attorney John Adams. Thank you for being here. When I reached out to him, when I reached out to him and told him that we wanted to do this, he said, "No problem." He quickly gave me the name of his enforcement officer for transportation. So thank you for being here. Senator Schrank. Directly related in having me show up down in Harrisburg for the bill signing, I want to thank you for that. And I got to meet the little girl from Lehigh County that was also one of the driving forces behind it. And her mom had pulled her out in front of the cars driving by her bus twice, and she was four years old, I believe. Representative Gillen. Supporting the district. Representative Maloney. Experience with your grandson.
That's correct. Just one month ago.
One month ago. Representative Rozi. These are the people that voted for the bill. We can't thank you enough. You stood up for kids, as you always do, but this was a situation that needed to be done. Hasn't been done for a while, and it has been a situation that we can't thank you enough for. Now, on the enforcement side, we have Representative from the Exeter Police, Sergeant Sean Forston. And for Central Berks, Chief Ray Seraphin. They are the ones that keep our kids safe, and then we are now armed with another tool to give them to help the enforcement process. Legislation amended by Governor Wolf, amended the vehicle code to allow for the placement of cameras on school buses to capture violators, which relates to meeting or overtaking a school bus when red signals are flashing. The old law required the school bus operators to report violations to the police within 48 hours if the school bus driver observed a violation. The information that the school bus operator must provide included information regarding to the identity of the driver, the license number, the color of the vehicle involved in the violation, the time and location of the violation, identification of the vehicle type, and other relevant information. If the report by the school bus operator to the police established a sufficient basis for the issuance of summons, a summary traffic offense citation would be issued against the driver. Those convicted of the violation would be subject to a fine of $250, 60-day suspension of driving privileges, and five points on their driving record. However, school bus drivers are responsible for the safety of the children on the bus. They may not have the ability to provide the necessary information to warrant a citation being issued for a violation of the statute. Stop-arm cameras enable the camera to collect the necessary information when there is a violation. Stop-arm cameras start recording once the stop signal arm and the red signal light is deployed. The recording captures the violations, and after reviewed by law enforcement, citations for violations can be issued. And I'd like to have Ben Barnard, our Supervisor of Transportation, come up with a short presentation on how the system works.
Thank you. I want to first thank the board for the approval of the stop-arm cameras. They have been very useful already. Since they've been installed in the last about two and a half weeks, we've already had three violators caught on video. So currently, there are two cameras on the buses underneath the stop-arm. They face backwards. One is a wide-angle lens. The other one is a close-up lens. They do have infrared strobe lights, so they do work in very limited light as well. One nice thing about the stop-arm cameras, too, is we can take a snapshot, so we can actually take a high-resolution JPG photo of the car as it's going by, and we can preserve that video for evidence. So actually, what I would like to do is actually show you a quick video of actually a violation in progress. So we're turning on wind spread and valley here. And you can see on the video what actually say, "Ambers are flashing," then it'll go to stop-arm. When it goes to stop-arm, that means the reds are on, and then five whole seconds later, that car went by. You know? So five whole seconds, plus the distance of 300 feet when the ambers were on, gave that car plenty of time warning to stop. That lady was on her cellphone. She just waved to the bus driver as she drove by. Next, I want to show you the old view versus the new view. The picture on the left was what the capacity we had before the stop-arm cameras. Hopefully, we got a picture of the car from a camera inside the bus. That did not always happen. As you can see, the car is very fuzzy. Can't read anything. The picture on the right is that snapshot photo of that car passing that bus. You can actually read the advertisement around the license plate. Is that crystal clear? One nice thing, too, as you see on the picture, it will tell you the time, the location, and it will actually be stamped "stop-arm." So it's great evidence. It can be easily produced for the police. And once again, I want to thank you everyone for voting and for making that experiment for its great safety to our children.
Question of law enforcement. What is the criminal charge? What are we looking at here when somebody violates the stop-arm?
The section itself shouldn't change. The penalties as well, they're severe penalties. So we would speak with the bus driver, write the appropriate section for passing a school bus, and then go ahead, follow up, and file that citation on that information received and based on the severance here.
So it's a misdemeanor?
It's a summary offense. It's still a summary offense.
However, they do lose their license automatically for 60 days, which frankly is substantial. Penalty.
Penalty five points on their license?
Yes.
$250 fine, and there's a $35 surcharge under this new law as well.
Okay, I just want to thank our legislators for the support of the bill. I want to thank our law enforcement and District Attorney for the support of enforcing this. And I certainly want to thank the board for the safety of the children and the parents. You have a picture in front of you that the Lorraine students, Jellicie's friends, have you thanking you for what you did. And again, I want to just make it clear to the community that we do have the stop-arm cameras, and we will catch you. And it will be enforced.
How many buses do we have with the cameras? Is there a strategy to get them all?
They were placed on all the high-impact areas right now, but we will be putting more on. And you don't know which one they're on, so don't pass by the buses.
Regarding that, Tim, what is our total program then to get them all on every bus at this point? That's our schedule.
Well, right now, it's in the vise-- four, 20 more buses to have the cameras put on. That would put us almost to about 70% capacity.
$500.
What can we do to just make sure they all have to arrive the next school year?
Take a vote? Excellent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. This time, we'll take about a two-minute break and just allow any of our folks or dignitaries of the fifth, the FLE, this will be a appropriate time. We're welcome to stay. We are welcome to stay, but obviously, you have busy schedules. So we'll just continue to break.
Good evening. I'm Bob Winter, 351 Woodland Avenue. I was reading paper last week for the last one, and I believe it was Mr. Hoffman asked questions about why we did not have a school resource officer or other armed presence. I felt the responses, although they weren't quite adequate, really didn't cover the story. And I was here when we made that story. About four years ago, at the time, we had a retired gentleman who roamed the halls of the high school, and we talked to the students and tried to get a feeling of their situation there. He got old like me and retired and went away. At that time, we were left with basically the same situation we have now, passive means of trying to limit the people who come into the buildings and our cameras. And I'm sure there's other things. But the fact is, worrying about people coming into the school is not really a big issue because the majority of the school shootings that take place are from students, internal. So in passive means, when we got the ID cards that all the board members wear, all the teachers wear, and the students, I don't know if they still wear them or not, I made the statement that was rather shocking to someone that all the ID cards are going to do is give us an easy way of identifying the bodies when it was over. So at the time, the superintendent at the time thought we needed a more active measure. We started negotiating with the police department, Exeter Township Police Department, working out what ultimately became a memorandum of understanding, which took us into after Dr. Phillips had come aboard. We had an SRO, School Resource Officer from another school district, come at the invitation of some of the police officers of our police troop. He came and talked to us this evening, told us how he really wasn't a riot control person. He was really a mentor. He was really a someone who the children, or our students, could come to, who was outside of the educational hierarchy. They had no fear of him. He wasn't going to get them suspended. He wasn't going to get them detention. They could talk to him, and that's what they did. And he was very proud of the fact that there had been instances where he was available and some student who would have never gone to anyone in the administration came up to him and told him Johnny so-and-so was going the wrong direction, said words of that effect. That is what an SRO is. He is not someone to create a pipeline to the prisons. He's not someone to go around twirling his gun like a Cisto kid. He is a peace officer, a foreign peace officer, and an officer of the law. He represents the law and the courts of our country. He acts as a mentor. He acts as a confidant. He acts as an advisor, and he also advises the school on security. He will teach, depending on the memorandum of understanding, he may teach driver safety course. In fact, there's since 1990, an average of 50 children are killed violently in the school setting. Not an automobile accident, but a violent killing, 50 a year on the average. Some years are higher, some go down as low as 40 or 30. But that's 50 children. That's 50 children too many. So we have the memorandum of understanding. Police Department said it was going to, or the township said it was going to cost $80,000 a year, and we brought it up to the vote. And just as what I told you an SRO is not, was the objections that came up at that meeting, a public meeting, so I'm not disclosing anything. It was a secret. Didn't want any weapons in the school issue. The only one that was allowed to have weapons is the one that was during a shooting. It was a pipeline to the jail system, which it is not. Just as our police officers use their discretion, when they stop you alongside the highway, they may give you a warning. They may scare the bejesus out of the student that's acting wrong, but it's not an automatic pipeline to the jail. So we brought it up for a vote. Everybody, as you do in this scenario, as they're saying, and then the administration spoke up and they said, "Oh, there's something more important they wouldn't spend the money on." Well, that shifted the vote, and it was voted down. And at that time, we were promised that we were going to get advisors who would be free to perform that function of roaming around and getting a gauge of how our students felt. I noticed that was Dr. Hamburger's response to Mr. Hoffman the other week. So I was in favor of it. I was involved in making up the MOU, and I still think it's a good idea. 50 kids a year. They don't want to make the headlines. Some of them are suicides. What if we had a cop here, a trusted agent, a man of authority, who was not going to get you in trouble in school, was not going to affect your grade, but somebody you could talk to? I'm in love with those suicide kids, too. How many kids would we have come up to that police officer and say, "Hey, Johnny's heading the wrong direction. He's giving us a wild talk." Or a few years ago, we had a child bring a revolver to a football game. Fortunately, he didn't know what he was doing with it, so it was non-functional, but he didn't know that. We need an active presence here, and I highly recommend that you and the board consider it. Talk it over. Bring in an SRO again. If you weren't here at the time, talk to them, see what they do do. And I know there's still some police down at the police department who were involved in it then, so I highly recommend that be reconsidered. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for sharing your thoughts, Mr. Schrank. Are any other comments? Okay. We'll move on with our agenda. We have a building program report. This is Dr. Frees. All right, this way.
Before we take a look at our data, I would like to recognize two students that are with us tonight. The first one is Elijah Farisa. He is here. He was the first-place winner for the Spotted Limpin' Fly Contest. We are very happy to have him here tonight.
I'm hanging a red picture. Turn around and smile over here for a picture. Look at that smile.
Okay, and our second person that we have to recognize tonight is Evan Smith. He was the first-place winner for the Reifton Spelling Bee Contest. Okay, for our data dashboard reports, Reifton, as you know, was founded in 2002.
I wouldn't think that would help.
We'll reflect that on the option for your evaluation.
We are at 578 students. We started the year out around 579. We have had a kind of an interesting year where we've lost two or three students, gained two or three students, and it's been doing that pretty much, as I said, since the beginning of the year. I have down here, please follow us on Twitter and Facebook. We've done a lot of posting throughout the year. If you had a chance to look at that, we have a lot of artwork on there, our STEM program, and we've been doing a lot of communicating with families, and Twitter and Facebook has been very good to us so far this school year. In terms of our student attendance, I have across the top here the discipline infractions, in-school, out-of-school, suspension, absences, tardy. If you take a look at this, you can see that over the years, we've gone up and down. We do have our current 18-19 data, and that's at 186 as of March 5, 2019. I do want to point out that this is our second year of having Chromebooks at Reifton, and the Chromebook infractions are on here. So if a child didn't come to school with a Chromebook charged, or a procaled, or something along those lines, those infractions are down here, showing that it looks like it is larger than it really is. We actually have had a good year in terms of discipline. Spring came a little early to Reifton, I'll be honest, but for the most part, it's, the ever's been very good. We do have our in-school, now-school suspensions here, our absences and tardies. We've been working very hard to get our absences down, so we've been doing a lot of communicating with families, especially those students that have chronic absences. We brought them in. We've had conferences. That is going very well. I noticed last year, our first year of having the conferences, just about every parent that came in for a conference for attendance or for absences, just about every single child's absences proved. Of those that did not come in, there was no change. Those that did come in, it has worked very, very well. Our tardies, certainly like to see those go down. We have communicated with the parents, and we will continue to do that. I do have demographics down here, our attendance rate, 93.8. As I say, we continue to work on improving that. Our chronically true, 1.7. School mobility, moving in and out of the district, 7.4. Our special education, 19.4. We're ahead of the district average. And economically disadvantaged, 31%. Looking at our PSSA, reading, three-year trend, as you can see by looking at the data here, for the most part, we've looked good over the years. Certainly, we want to continue to improve in reading. We're somewhere between 72 and 82%. That should be dropped a little bit. We want to obviously not see that continue, but we have a very, very good program in our K-4 buildings. Our students come to us very well-prepared. Our fifth and sixth-grade teachers do a great job of preparing kids throughout the year to do well, not just on tests, but just in general. So we do like this, but again, there's room for improvement. PSSA mathematics, take a look at the three-year trend. In terms of our three-year trend, I know that it's going in and out, but in terms of our three-year trend, our math scores certainly are scores that could improve, but we're working on it. We have a lot of different things that we're doing to improve those. Rose Balinski has done just a fantastic job working with our teachers and through her constant guidance throughout the course of the school year. I really do feel that we will see improvements in our math scores. We've got Star Math for the first time. Teachers are able to take a look at the data throughout the quarter, and that's done four times a year. Our IXL program gives us a chance to kind of get the temperature of the kids, to see how they're doing. Our IXL math program, as Mr. Plam pointed out in the last month for his data report, basically, we're taking a look at improving the scores of those kids that really need it, and as well as all of our kids, looking at the data of our high flyers and gives them a chance to improve as well. So there's been a lot of good things. It gives us a chance to look at the strengths and weaknesses of all of our kids. Here is our proficient or advanced on PSSA. Reifton is at 75%. The statewide average is 63. In mathematics, we're dead even. It's at 45.5%. This is just a clip. We do not have science at Reifton, but the statewide average is 54.3. Next slide. As advanced on our state assessment, in addition to working with improving our scores, we need to make sure that we're growing the highest of the high as well. This gives you an opportunity to see the percentage of advanced is 28.3. At Reifton, statewide average is 18.3. It's 18% in mathematics. We're slightly above the state. Proficient or advanced on Pennsylvania state assessments is next slide. This next slide, academic growth score for English Language Arts is at 86%. This is meeting annual academic growth expectations. This is PBUS. We are growing in language arts, and we're certainly proud of that. Statewide average growth is 74.9. Again, we've got some room for improvement in math. Academic growth is 73.3. Statewide average is 75.2. I really do feel that we will see increases in the next two years as we continue to put forward all of the things that we're going to help to improve our math instruction in our buildings. Dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills are DIBL, our oral reading fluency. Over the years, I think we've done quite well. Right now, in fifth grade, 63%. That was the beginning of the year. Middle of the year has been up, 74%. That's in fifth grade. In sixth grade, we started at 89%. Middle of the year, we're at 90%. And we're certainly hoping for large growth for both grade levels. Our parent partnership survey, this is the first year that we've done anything like this. We took a look at what Watten Creek uses and what Watten Creek sends out to parents. We've done a lot over the years with building surveys, and what we wanted to do was to take a look at how the families felt about Reifton. I sent out an email to all of the parents. It went out to about 1,000 people. We had 131 people that responded out of that little over 1,000. We used the Whitehead Scale. Five strongly agree, one strongly disagree. First question was school climate. I feel welcome when I attend. I feel welcome when I attend events at the school or phone to school for any reason. That was 4.18. My child looks forward to coming to school, 3.82. The vision, mission, and goals of Reifton School, it was presented and explained by the principal and our teachers, 3.99. The programs at Reifton School are child-centered and meets my child's needs, 3.93. I'm aware of my child's expectations for my school, 4.19. My child shows me what he, she has learned at school by what he or she does at home, such as sharing information from School G or Student Planners, talking about books and sharing projects done in school, 3.61. For communication, I'm able to ask questions and express concerns about my child and the school program, 4.27. Staff at Reifton School provides me with information about the school program so that I can support my child's learning at school, 3.81. And finally, parent involvement, I've been offered opportunities to be involved in my child's education, fifth grade orientation, curriculum overview night, parent conferences, concerts, art shows, School G, Chromebook meetings, 4.35. Replacing the data, I think when I take a look at this, one of the things that I think that we've worked really hard as a building from the very beginning, and it's a challenge that came to us from our superintendents to increase communication across the district, and we have done a nice job at Reifton. All of our teachers are weekly communicating, whether it be as a team or individually, with parents. We are sending either emails home or Class Dojo, or we're using School G, and there's a lot of communication. We're doing Facebook, we're doing Twitter. I have increased the amount of parent links that I've been trying to send home, with 3.81. I'd like to see that a little higher, but we have worked very hard and will continue to do that as the year goes on. But 3.81, to be honest, was a little disappointed in that, but I think that the communication piece, I think it takes time for people to get kind of used to the way that you do things. And we have increased and will continue to do that, but I've been proud of the job that our teachers have done with communicating. But honestly, it's been a good year, so we've had a lot of good things to communicate. So I've been very happy with that. This gives you an idea, this last slide. This is our P-Vos data. Valuable Reading, certainly what we want to look at is growth over three years. When we look at English Language Arts, that 2016 growth measure that was at, we were in yellow, and the back of, basically shows what that means, but yellow is moderate evidence that the school did not meet the standard for Pennsylvania academic growth. Then we went to green, which is where you want to be, it's kind of in the middle. Dark blue is the best, and that's 2018 growth measure. So we're certainly very proud of that in fifth grade. In sixth grade, you can see how that looked over the years. 2017, we were in dark blue. We went to green in sixth grade. The three-year average, we're in light blue, which is obviously fantastic, and in sixth grade, dark blue is the best. So we've been very pleased with our English Language Arts scores. And then math, 2016, we were in red, and we went to green, and we're back at red in fifth grade. Again, we've got some more to do there. In sixth grade, we've been in dark blue for most of those, but again, we have some room for some improvement in the past, but we're doing a lot of good things. The final slide, I added this just a few hours ago. I think this would be important as well. Although it's not data, many of you are aware that we have the Reifton Cow, and we finally named that this year. That was another challenge from the superintendent that, you know, he told me, Greg, it's about time you named that cow. People come into the building, they stare at the cow, it's time that we get the name that. Mr. Gelof came to that, Dr. Hemberger came to that, and we're certainly pleased to have two of them, as well as the superintendent, assistant superintendent. It was a great day. Just a couple of pictures here. We named it Herbie, and that was done after, the name came from the Irvine Farm, and I think that that was a great testament to all of the hard work that the farmers put into making the Irvine Farm successful. And it was great to have Mr. and Mrs. Irvine there, for our teachers, our students to see them, they were basically treated like celebrities. It was really a fun, a fun day, and I can't say that getting a pie in your face is something that I look forward to, but it was a fun event, and it was neat because Gabrielle was there, she had an opportunity, she got the first one, so it was good for the rest of us to see if she could take it, we knew we could do it as well. And she did a nice job. Then I was second, and then we had Dr. Winters, he did a fun job with it. I don't know, it looked to me like the person who got the most cream was our superintendent, and he did quite well. He got a large candy. He did well, he had more of it on his face than the rest of us, I don't know how that worked out. But yeah, it was, it was a fun, a fun day.
Dr. Free, just a couple of questions. First of all, you guys do do a great job on Twitter. I follow your account, and you are pretty prolific in terms of tweets, not as much as Senator Schwinn. And one of the things I have a question regarding absences, the Redding Eagle ran a very large series of two weeks ago around homelessness. They've got a lot of reaction from people in the Exeter community, because I think it opens some eyes to the fact that there is homelessness in Exeter. And I'm wondering if your experience and your top reasons for absences are related to homelessness issue? Or what were those top reasons? And you said that you had, something had worked in terms of reducing the number of absences, so what is it that's worked?
What's worked is having the meetings. After they have so many absences, we will bring them in, and that's required now by the state. And we sit down, it's a series of questions that we ask them. It's a form that's filled out, but although the form is good, to be honest with you, it's not the form that's, that's the best part of it, it's the dialogue going back and forth, because it gives us an opportunity to find out exactly why a child has an absentee. And sometimes you get a lot of interesting information. Sometimes it's because there's anxiety issues. Sometimes they're afraid to come to school, or there's this reason or that reason. It gives us an opportunity to talk. I can tell you, in the last several weeks, probably the biggest reason that I'm getting from parents is they're sending in slips with their child, but it gets lost in their child's bookshelf or folder, and they're not handing them in. And it's not till several months later that the parent opens up the folder and says, oh, wait, you know, turn this in, before they get the letter from the school. So what's really been good about these meetings is they'll come in, they'll talk to me, and I'll say, you realize that you can now email, you can now email the absence into school? And, you know, many of them don't know that. We have sent out several emails, and we've communicated that over and over again, but it does give me an opportunity, gives us an opportunity to have that conversation before they leave. We make sure that they're into Skyward if they, if they're not, and we also make sure that they have a copy of how we get into that. We actually hand them a piece of paper. And I can tell you that since I've started doing that, almost, almost all of them, so this year, things have improved. But yeah, I think a large, a large reason is, you know, sometimes kids get sick, sometimes parents don't understand that they have to turn the slips in. They'll make the phone calls, but they, they don't realize that they also have to turn the slip in. But, you know, we explained that in the beginning of the year, but I think it's one of those things that we have to continue to make sure that we get across to parents.
Thank you.
Yes?
A couple of questions, Greg. First one is, something is up with our first sheet with the ethnic breakout. At our, for your school, you're 2.1% are miscellaneously missed and 2.3% throughout the district, or somewhere hanging out there, we have no classification, actually 10-4%. So I'm not quite sure what's going on, you know, if it's a bad one, maybe it's a surrounding thing, or maybe it's a broad trust, it doesn't seem, the library goes to you. On a more serious note, I'm looking right now at the information used for mathematics, and, you know, unfortunately, it seems that we hear a lot of times in our performances and where we want to be, and we're never quite getting there, and we're always making efforts, but I'm looking really now at the 2000 goal, 30 goal, 71.8%, and I'm saying, that's a big leap to get to 71.8, where you're only looking at 11 years to get there, based on the previous trend that we're basically almost in a slide, or really not getting beyond where we did. So I'm wondering, how do we build that energy? How do we build that excitement? How do we make sure children walk into a math class and feel totally intimidated, but feel they can be just as good as the person sitting next to them, or at least they can get there from here, and feel like it's not just a puzzle that has no pieces, but something that is like a tic-tac-toe board. There's always an X, there's always an L, and there's always an A, B, C, and yes. I'm just trying to see, how do we get that energy there? It's very concerning to me, because it's not just an extraveh, it's not a state-based, it's actually a national trend that we lack in our mathematics. And mathematics are something that's looked upon on a, basically on a life table. You're looking at skills, you're looking at states overall, your performance, you're looking at where your jobs are going to, and you're looking at how your marketability is. Without mathematical skills, your status in general, in general, would fall behind. And I'm hoping that we can identify means and methods to get ourselves over that hurdle. I know it's hard, but just something, you just have to find that magic key somewhere that's going to make this work. With regards to your survey you did.
Oh, you went, you went after it.
Okay. I just didn't know there was an answer.
You're giving me a chance to speak about my favorite thing, mathematics.
Good, at least you told us.
So we're doing a lot of work in mathematics. We know a lot about kids learning mathematics comes with their mindset, and you made a perfect point. If a child comes into a class and thinks that they don't have the ability to do math, we need them. And part of that is, everybody knows that math is sequential. So we're differentiating our instruction, and our Dream Box programs and our IXL programs get to the kids' learning gaps. So we're filling in those learning progressions for each, each child in the structure, kids that need to be stretched. We know that when we teach math lessons, a child might have it now, but if they don't have the pre-person skills, they don't remember it three, three weeks or a month from now. So our software programs and our small group instruction is helping to fill those pre-person gaps. So it's going to be, it's going to be, it's not a short road. It's like climbing a mountain, there's lots of layers to it, and it's going to take us a while. But we are very attentive to helping kids enjoy math, the Dream Box, because it identifies what children can do at a stronger level, and it's based on gaming. Kids are loving it. So the more we can get them engaged in activities to enjoy math, the more they're going to learn. We're also getting people excited about math by talking about the program. Because it's not easy, some can't learn math, which is not true. We know that visual pathways, we're using visual pathways when we solve math problems. So we know by making math visual to kids, we're building those visual pathways and making them more math-like. Our teachers are working really hard to get kids to get through problems that have more than one way to solve, so they're having opportunities to develop. A lot of times, people look at a problem and only think that you're supposed to give the answer right away. So part of getting kids engaged in math is teaching, is teaching them, is supposed to be hard, and it doesn't mean you're not smart enough. It just means that we have to look at it a different way. Teachers are around kids, and they're not giving the answers, but they're asking the guy the questions to get them to the solution. So we're building confidence, we're building productive struggle. We've also got some alignment with our curriculum, with our basic fact literacy and our implementation philosophy.
Can you reveal what was done over the summer with the teacher groups that we brought in?
So this summer, we worked K-6, and we started by looking at state standards, and we unwrapped their state standards and really talked about what, what does a standard mean? What does a child have to be able to know and do to become within a standard? After we did that, we looked at our investigations program, and we aligned the state standards to the investigations, and we found that there were some gaps that we had to fill lessons to keep those progressions down. We did a lot of work. Investigations is a great program, and it teaches a lot of conceptual understanding, but we, we found out that children were not getting enough practice, they were getting conceptual understandings about basic facts, but they were not having enough time to practice basic facts, so it became automatic, automatic system. And we built that into our K-3 curriculum, so we built activities, assessments, to assure that our kids can do math. We've also recorded that out on the fourth part.
Two questions that come out of the, with, you don't want to teach to the test, but are the formatting that we're giving to the students when the learning tool in a format that would say, okay, I understand how that question would come up.
So it's interesting. I just worked with a group of teachers two mornings ago. A lot of our investigation questions, our children are not exposed to multiple choice questions. So answering a multiple choice question is a strategy. So by teaching kids how to answer that question, they're not teaching them to test. We talked about unwrapping the problem using a literacy skill, and then using their number sense to eliminate distractors. So it was a whole process that we went through that investigations really does them all for the kids. So that's not teaching for the test, but it's teaching children very valuable test-taking and reasoning skills.
Well, we have the teachers in the park, fortunately, in our school district, we have a very good investment, and that's done a good job of that. In addition to that, I mean, we do have the problem that in the summertime, there's the emphasis slide, and not every child participates in the test, unfortunately, but I think that that's one of the biggest problems we have. It's one of those unique things where a child can go to the library and pick up a book, they'll go to the library to pick up a math.
Not yet, but we're moving in that direction.
You just have to direct, someone has to figure out how we can time the math teams.
Well, this, our Dream Box and our IXL, we have licensed that all summer, so that will be open to our kids to use all summer. So that, I mean, that is, you know, we're already paying for it for the summer months, so that, that's automatic. But, you know, I think part of this is all of us becoming advocates for mathematical education. When I grew up, literacy was the gatekeeper. Now literacy, math, and STEM are all gatekeepers. Children need all of those things now. We can predict kids' success in college based on their understanding of the number ones. So all of us as educators and parents, we need to promote math to our kids. So many kids, I want you to think about this. Have you ever been to out with your friends or to a party and hear people say they hate math and can't do math?
Only one friend.
But true.
That's why our family is strange.
So, so think about this. Have you ever heard someone at a picnic or a party where your friends say they can't That would be embarrassing for people to admit, but it's okay not to know math, and that's a mindset that we have to change. And we have to change it by getting the kids, just as you said, excited about math, and we have to build lessons of instruction that gets right to where children are ready to work. Our Dream Box and our IXL, our teachers are helping us do that. But in the last five years, there's been a tremendous shift in math. Not only did content shift from grade levels, what used to be sixth grade content, now fifth grade content, but also the way kids learn and understand and what they do with math, which is a really good thing, because what good is an algorithm, they don't know what to do with. So our teachers and our kids want this really big transition across the state and across the nation. But if you went into some of our classrooms and heard some of the conversations that our kids are having about math, you would be so excited to hear kids talk about math and raise their hand. We have a lot of work to do, but we have a really good start, and we're just going to keep it flowing away and making it good for kids and making them excited. So please, we've got the math activities for kids. Don't say you can't do math and you hate math, because other than that, it's okay. And really, all of us can do math, it's about the way we're taught, towards our math program. So we have kind of a mathematical mindset for kids. So we have kind of a mathematical mindset for kids. Almost okay to struggle, it's not supposed to be. So to come back to your, come back to the beginning. We worked this summer to align curriculum instruction section. We're working in our classrooms, we have the software going, we have the STAR tests, we're doing the STAR tests. Really, the results of that target what big gaps these have and try to address it. It's, it's, it can be a long process, but we're going to do it. Because now that we're, math rocks. Math rocks.
Thank you.
I love her.
This is, yeah.
I'm excited to know.
I have one more question, is that okay, Allison? So I was just looking at the survey. It was great you had it, you had 130 participants. Is there a way you can increase that number? Because basically, I guess you have, what, about 500, 600 pounds right now for children?
Possibly to extend the timeout. We gave them about two weeks. I've found in the past that when we do things like this, usually it's better to have a shorter timeframe. I don't know, I've been told that 130 was not bad for the first time.
Well, it's only first, that's really good for the first time now.
But I'd like to certainly see.
Almost 25%, that's more than 25%.
What I was going to mention, I think right now, maybe I've written something that we're seeing is that the students that are coming into fifth and sixth year, in sixth, seventh, now, they're the first students that had investigations all the way through. And I think that's kind of maybe part of why we had such a downward decline for so many years. And I'm really hoping that these new programs that we have implemented will help as well.
Dr. Pries. Number one, thank you for the invitation to the Navy party. That was a great event in every way. My take from it was how well behaved the kids are. You had 600 people more jammed into that gymnasium. And at the beginning of the program, everybody is, the kids are yelling and screaming and they're yelling at each other. Teacher steps up, who was the master of ceremonies? Mr. Dewalt. Mr. Dewalt, correct. He very quietly said, everybody, let's settle down, let's settle down. It didn't come down far enough. One teacher raised her hand, a student raised her hand, and it went down the line like a wave of a football stick. And the kids quieted down from raising their hand. That's impressive. When I was a kid, teachers used to grab his pilot neck. Don't do that. I was really impressed. They need a gamble.
I think that's all the questions. Thank you, Dr. Pries, for starting off.
Thanks, sir.
To move on in our agenda, we have a, actually, the report's a discussion item, but it's a 214 bond refunding, including new capital funds.
For each of the board members, I did provide a short PowerPoint, which are some summaries, slides from Jamie Schutenger. He was here in January and presented one, which the 214 bond funding is an opportunity to take advantage of lower interest rates. At a facility committee meeting, we had discussions about, well, how are we going to fund all the projects going forward? And I was asked to look at, well, you know, with the refunding, there's an opportunity for new money. At our most recent Business Function Committee meeting, I did share a schedule Jamie put together to include some new money and what it might cost in terms of additional debt service for years. So what I wanted to do tonight was to document on the refunding, the rates are holding. Direction from the board. Yes, we want to. So I'm going to present a couple of different scenarios. Jamie will, the plan now is probably to come back in April. You need to have a decision on how much, if there is new money, so you build it into the resolution, the parameters resolution. And then we will move ahead with the refunding and new money, if that's the Director of the Board would like to go with. So, in the PowerPoint that you have, it does show summary of our debt. And this middle highlighted section is the 2014 issue, which we have the opportunity to save some funds into savings if we do the final. So the amount of savings, as I said, is still there. Estimated between $355,000 approximately and $377,000. And the reason those numbers differ is if you take your savings upfront, maybe if we took it this year, the total is a little less compared to if you spread it out over remaining maturities of all of our bonds outstanding. So at this point, I'm thinking, taking it over a period of time, liking the run of the pages, not only because the savings are greater, but if we were to issue new money, it would help offset the additional debt service. So why do we need new money? And why do we want to take advantage of this opportunity? Looking at the next three years, when you issue new money, you have to spend it within three years. So looking at the next three years, and what is it in our long-range capital plan? Adding up those three years, it's about $6.4 million. So what's in 1920? Well, we have the projects that are out to bid now, and they'll be open. The bids will be open on March 27. We also have some weatherproofing projects which haven't been specced out yet. But they are things that need to be done. And the senior hive in the area. So those three major components make up $4.9 million. Then in 2021, you know, there are some, a smaller project to convert some controls, the Matic, to direct digital and connection. And then in 2122, and I slotted in here, there was discussion at the facility meeting to move the unit ventilators, which were originally, for cash flow purposes, put in 2023 and beyond, move it up to 2122. And that's $1.2 million, that's pretty significant. So, you know, next three years, we have major capital projects looking at $6.4 million. And this is just a, the board had seen this, approved this. These are the ones that are out to bid now, the $3.4 million, the different work that's being done. This is a reminder to you, but that's what will be open on 3/27. So what do we have available? Our capital funds are separated from our general fund, even though our general fund does have a commitment of fund balance of $1.4 million. But for accounting purposes, we do separate funds, and I won't get into that detail. But our major capital reserve fund is Fund 32. But adding these numbers up, what our balance is, we have about $6.7 million dollars. And we do have some outstanding capital obligations for LED. We have not paid that in full as of yet. Small balance on our mechanical contractor from the work that is done over the summer in the buildings. And we also have the Carson baseball field that is coming up after the, soon, okay. So what are we, what are we looking at after paying these bills? $6.2 million. And if we look at the total, which I just reviewed, of $6.4 million, well, at the end of three years, our funds will be all used up essentially. It's important to maintain a capital reserve fund balance. And I'm recommending that we do maintain a balance, because we have other projects on the horizon, and we need to have some funds available for unforeseen projects. So, what I presented at the Business Function Committee meeting was a scenario of borrowing of about $2.7 million dollars. Again, maintaining a fund balance, $2.5 million in capital reserve, not spending it all down over the next three years. Well, from '22, '23, '27, '28, we have another $2.5 million, you know, on the rise in the projects, based on the study that was done by KCBA. General fund, I'm recommending, well, let's move on to our commitment at $1.4 million. Because we have things that are smaller capital projects. We have playground equipment, carpeting, replacing, you know, single units of HBA systems in, you know, right through this building. So, over the years, that will add up to about a million. So this illustrates that, you know, there is a real need to maintain a balanced capital reserve, and we will use our general fund to limit that. So, $2.7 million really puts us into a non-bank qualified situation. To stay bank qualified, your total issuance has to be less than $10 million. So we're funding about $8.1 million. Adding $2.7, that puts us over. But then really, from what Mr. Schutenger has told me currently, because the way the market is, there used to be a spread of 20 basis points between non-bank qualified and bank qualified. We always try to stay under bank qualified, because it's more preferential in terms of the rates that you get. He says that's not, really not significant in the current market. So, the only difference with non-bank qualified is the call date, meaning when you could actually have an opportunity to refinance. It changes from five years to seven years. So you can use a little bit of flexibility there. He did send me pricing today, and I did have a chance to look at it, comparing, a couple of schools were priced out today, bank qualified versus non-bank qualified. So, many of that, at $2.7 million to add on this new money, and adding it to our current debt structure, kind of keeping it all level, the annual debt service adds $80,000 to the, you know, the debt service budget, basically. Obviously, if you take your savings over time, as I illustrated in one of those earlier slides, here's where I was illustrating, taking it over time, well, these savings will help offset that additional debt service. Also, I was saying to look at $1.5 million, which keeps us in a bank qualified status. But it also, you know, the debt service goes down to, you know, approximately $47, $50,000 to $50,000. So, you know, that's something coming up with a range of between $1.5 and $2.7. But I am, you know, of the opinion that taking it over time, savings will be more beneficial. So if we wanted to take savings upfront, which at this point, I'm thinking, let's spread it out. Maybe put a little more in 1920 and then spread it out over the remainder. And if we wanted to take it all upfront, you know, we'd have to settle before 515, and that would be a tight timeline. It's possible, but it is very tight. So I'm really suggesting take savings over, you know, spread it out over the remaining amortization schedule. As I mentioned, it'll help offset additional debt. We would adopt a resolution, or we're going to adopt a resolution, and be able to refine additional money. That's the direction. But it's also important to know what those, like 2019 projects are going to come in at. Which is why on 3/27, we'll see what the cost is. Last year when we opened bids, they came in significantly higher than what the estimate was. So that's one more piece of the puzzle that I feel that we need in order to determine, well, how much, you know, that'll tell us how, what amount of money that is really needed. Another future funding opportunity would be this first one, obviously is the 2014, you know, $75,000. But our 2012 Series A, which is in, the call date is November of 2020. There is an opportunity, based on current market rates, to save another $500,000. So, at this juncture, I, you know, I have to give direction to PFM and Bonds Council, whether the board will entertain additional new money. So the resolution is going to, you know, to include that. But after 3/27, I will inform you what the results of the bid are. And is that they, they come in lower, that'll be great, but if they come in higher, like they did last year, then it's really going to be in the, to add on additional money with this.
So, when we're looking at this, I guess the first question I have is, with regards to the additional money, would you think it's better than to drop that second piece, the $2.1 million to a later date, possibly pushing that to the 2020 or beyond, versus dropping the $2.7 and $2.1 together in a total refinancing that would go over that $10 million point?
I'm going to go back to the slide that I think you're referring to.
You said it was $2.7 for the stuff that would go through 2021, 2022, another $2.1 to carry us through 2029 for the improvements. I think it was, yeah, that, those.
Correct, if you're referring to that.
Correct. $2.4, $2.5, I guess not $2.1. So you think it's better to push that to a later time to include that extra $2.4 million, $2.5 million?
Right, I believe, well, I think we're, to keep our debt kind of level, I don't know that we can add any additional new money beyond the $2.7. And again, I'll get clarification with Jamie on that, so I think it's remaining level. And obviously, three years is the magic number. We have to spend that money, $2.7 or $1.5, somewhere, whatever we choose to do new money, we have three years to spend.
With regards to your question of whether we should take it at one time or extend it, I would suggest that we extend it over the period, which will then lessen the impact of the additional funds slightly. But it'll give us some benefit there. And what is the total term of the bond then? Looking at 15, 20-year bond, or what is that coming to that period?
It's, we're extending it to our term, which is 2028.
Anne, sorry. What would be the ramification to the budget as a whole if we were just to increase our general fund commitments for capital expenses instead of borrowing new money? Do you have some general idea of what that would look like? I mean, because we're going to be paying debt service no matter what if we do new money. I'm wondering if we can do a little bit extra on top of what we're borrowing, and what the debt service would look like on an annual basis, and put that into the capital reserves annually for the next couple of years, if we could end up covering at least close to our projects past 2021?
Are you suggesting that we increase the commitments and do a transfer to capital reserve every year?
Yeah.
In lieu of borrowing new money? I can run that budget scenario between now and when we open bids. Just what that looks like.
The reason I ask is because we're always going to pay more for what we borrow. And while we are very fortunate now that we have a higher fund balance for capital reserve, I'm wondering if we can realize the same end goal by increasing the commitment that we make from the general fund instead of borrowing new money. And I'm curious to hear what your thoughts are too, because I can imagine that creates a little bit more strain and maybe some uncertainty about what the budget deficit will look like, because it is substantial as we're looking at it now. But we will pay less, as far as I can tell, we will pay less for those investments than we would for if we were borrowing in the long run.
I don't think that would be a very good idea, because as we look at this year, we're already drawing up a fund balance. Money, frankly, is pretty cheap right now. We can take our investment into these materials, we're going to get return on these investments. I think it's a better way to look at the money, because we're not buying something that has a three or five-year life expectancy. We're replacing heating and air conditioning units, which have a very long-term, you know, 20, 25-year. So, we're going to get a lot more return on that investment. I think that we should not hurt ourselves on one end, but we can take advantage of a bank situation, which will help us to level out our costs in our special interest.
Could I ask, is there an amount that we could borrow in new funds that the savings that we would get from refinancing would cover that debt, that additional debt service completely? So, it would basically be a wash?
Basically, the 1.5 million.
The 1.5 million would? I guess I'm just concerned, and I appreciate that, Jim, that borrowing is less steep, especially right now, than historically it's ever been. I just don't know if that's reason in and of itself to borrow money. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I'm looking at your annual outlay of cash that's going to come into that, and the fact of right now, we're eroding the fund balance as it is. And this would release, relieve some of that pressure, instead of having to take those funds out and now you don't have them available, or having to go back onto the market. When our fund balance is lower, it possibly positions us in a lower credit rating than we currently are looking at. So, with the fact that we have low interest rates, we have a position credit rating, and the fact that it's going to level out costs, it allows budgeting to be a little bit more fluid, I think, for the leisure department. I was wondering.
And the concern with the operating budget is, it's just, you know, you've seen the preliminary, you'll see the postpartum, you know, the constraints of, you know, contracts, salaries and wages, they just, they're going to keep going up. So, I illustrated the general fund, 1.4 million, you know, we are going to need funds going forward for smaller capital projects. It's just an opportunity now for new money, and if you want to use the savings to offset additional debt service, I think it's a good opportunity to infuse additional amount to get us definitely through, you know, the next, you know, three years. And still have 2.5 million remaining in capital projects for the next, you know, several years. So, I'll let you know the results of the bid opening, and then I'll meet a, what is the board's general feeling on this at this point? You know, Mr. Brady, what do you feel? To go forward and take advantage of it?
I would say to extend it.
To extend it, savings?
Yeah.
Right.
Do you think we should then add additional funds, or you think we should just refinance what we have?
Oh, no, I need additional, because it goes in zeros.
The 1.5 million offset?
Yeah.
Not add to the budget, increase additional debt service.
Right.
Okay?
Anne, did we take care of all our lighting and stuff that we were doing in the schools as far as, you know, putting, you know, less than over time, we would pay for that lighting?
The LED?
Yeah. Has that been taken care of?
The entire project?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Mr. President will answer that.
There is still the outstanding issue of the pandemic. We met recently with Dolphin regarding that. They're unsuccessful in finding a compatible LED bulb to work with our blue-tron lighting system, and they are proposing giving us back a credit for those areas that they were unable to find those bulbs. I have requested from them and taken upon myself to research other options, because I'm not 100% sure that that is something that's just not possible, so I have to look for other avenues on how to hold it accountable for what was requested.
So, about what percentage of our lighting have we worked on? I mean, 80%, 70%?
Yeah, probably around the 80% mark. A lot is really the place where that's affected most by the situation, that's probably, I would say 60%, but the other 40% are all typical bulbs in classrooms. I've read that I think there's some small areas that would see your high as, I'd say maybe around 10 or 15% of that, maybe even less than that for the big bulbs. But everything other than that are basically.
So, do you think during the school year, or we could, or get into the next school year, I mean, when do you think the project could be completed?
Depends on what the resolution for the solution, the pandemic situation, trying to find a solution and then.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gash. I'm going to move on, and through our agenda here, we're up to item five, the minutes, which will be approved at the next board voting meeting. So, we've got special voting minutes, board workshop minutes, and board voting minutes of February 19th. So, if anyone on the board has an opportunity to review those and sees anything amiss with that, please contact the administration in the interim. Next section, board policy. We're wrapping up our 300 section of the policy, which is our personnel, which is great. So, we're making progress, and we're moving into the 600s, which have to do with finances. So, we have, for second reading, we have the remaining, you know, part of the personnel policies, which include benefits for part-time employees, jury duty, paid holidays. These are all things that we've already had some discussion about, review, workers' compensation, transition to work programs, and unlawful harassment, and a drug and substance abuse policy for employees. And then moving into the 600s, we'll be, we'll have a second reading on debt management. So, we're moving into the very beginning of the fiscal policies. The first policy that we're going to be considering for first reading is 602, not much of a change. The fiscal objectives policy, not much of a change from the prior policy, some minor content updates for better clarity, and add some language on submitting an annual financial report with Secretary of Education. 602 is budget planning, and this is a policy to replace the district language in some areas with some of the proposed PSBA model policy language, which is more general and relevant to the overall. 603, budget preparation. This is one that probably, Anne, I don't know how much for you, you've had a chance to go through with this, but this really is one where PSB recommends that we really take a good look at that and make sure that what's in this policy is consistent with our current district practice. I mean, there are some minor content updates for this. They certainly added some language to make it in compliance with Act One, you know, as it pertains to the preliminary budget. 604 is a new policy, and there was a, some language added here, again, to replace, replace some of the language with PSBA's policy guide, so we're in accordance with Act One. But this is another policy that really should get some careful scrutiny to make sure it's consistent with district practice. Tax levy. They deleted some specific lists of taxes and replaced a more general language in this policy and deleted language on assessments and appeals. And the reason for that was because of those should be addressed on a case-by-cases with the school solicitor and not part of the policy language. Tax collection, this is one I had a question about, Anne, because part of the language, and it was just the way it was phrased, was indicating that the, I'm going to open up that policy for just a second. Part of that policy reads that the taxes would be collected and permitted to the business office, and there's a hyperlink to the school code, and it basically indicates that the taxes should be collected and permitted to the district treasurer, and that was crossed out by us, and then we made the audit. We may be edited on that. And I'm just wondering, because it's actually specified in school code about remitting the taxes to the district treasurer, we should, I'm wondering whether we should keep that language in there, recognizing that it does go to the district, I mean, obviously goes to the district business office.
I mean, we can do that if you wanted to. I realize, I know that, but it doesn't make practical sense to me.
You're right.
Saying the district business office, you know, sometimes the treasurer is in the district business office, sometimes we have a board member who is the treasurer. So, by saying go to the district business office, well, it'll get to the treasurer.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to refer to.
Maybe we could split it down the middle somehow and kind of indicate, you know, at least parentheses treasurer or something like that, just board treasurer, so that we have some reference to the code. That's all I, that was my only concern about tax collection. 607 was tuition income, there were some just minor content provisions to that policy. And finally, child abuse, which is really an important policy, that's 806, that's not in the 600 section, so this was put in, I think, special request from the people services office to make sure that we are in compliance, and I think this is part of the special ed reporting process, that we have to make sure that this particular policy is up to date. Yeah. And our policy had not been updated, I think, since 2003, so there were obviously some changes to the child protective services law that we had to, we had to address. So, that's, those are the policies for first reading. I know you folks are looking them over, if you happen to see anything that catches your eye, feel free to communicate that to Natalie, and she'll, she'll make sure folks are aware.
I have some questions about both of these, starting number 604. This was the budget option.
Budget option.
I'm looking, the first line I looked at was under the party, and it spoke of the board shall highly, but not later, the first business meeting, January, decide the budget options to the fiscal year, but the board shall approve either the accelerated budget process option or the board resolution option. Wondering if that is, I know that in February, we just approved. I'm wondering if this being in January is accelerating process particularly, too.
Well, according to the timeline that we're following this year, the accelerated board resolution would have to have been adopted by the end of January, and that would need to stay within the accelerated budget process. Obviously, in order for you to make a decision about the resolution, you have to see the budget first, so that has to take place in January. So, that's the process we're currently following? Does that answer the question?
Right, just making sure that we're not, you know, condensing this because we're shirring ourselves into something where we really can't perform, and that's where, we have to, we need to be able to.
Right, with the accelerated budget process, what we're doing, we saw the preliminaries, maybe some pieces in December, then in January, decided not to adopt the resolution and approved in February.
And that'll be with, would be within the 110, 10-day.
Correct.
Dr. Amberger. Number 603. Under authority, the second paragraph, second sentence, "Once adopted, the budget deserves the support of all members of the board, regardless of their position when adoption was voted."
Yes.
Can you clarify what that means? Because I got a feeling I'm going to be in violation of a policy a lot, if it means what I think it means.
The SBA tells you what the policy is, you got to live with it.
Well, I don't think it's directing us to have a unanimous vote, but I think once it's adopted, you know, I think we support it.
I think that, I would think this means that once we adopt the budget, we say we're going to provide funds for certain programs or purchases that later on, you can't renave on the fact that that was the past board, the past budget. Doesn't mean you can't tell your friends and your neighbors or your associates that, by the way, I wasn't a big fan. Because once you leave this room, you're a private citizen. Yeah, I mean, that's a, I don't know what else is true.
Yeah, I mean, that's true with a lot of things we do as a board. I mean, we may disagree, and we may vote against, but when it comes down to the decision that's made by the board, you know, we try not to, let's say, undermine that decision after the board has, you know, made that.
So, I should stop it?
If you're undermining, I would, I would make that suggestion. I'm not saying you are.
Usually, there's bad erosion, you got to eat floods with it.
Other comments about policies? Okay, thanks for that discussion. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Dill, for business functions.
Thanks, Dr. Amberger. Next week, we'll be voting on the E-rate capital switch replacement. There was a change in which bid was the accepted one. We already voted on one, we're going to switch that. The BCTC budget, renewal of Penn Teladad agreement, and budget transfers.
Any questions about any of those items? Okay, I made personnel committee, Mr. Capina.
So, we'll be dealing with a couple of issues that we'll be voting on next week with the personnel committee. First, we have retirements. We will be voting on a retirement of Mr. Hardy, as the assistant principal at the junior high, and Dr. Schlosser, the principal at Jacksonville Elementary. I think both are here this evening.
Mr. Capina, I would like, since I know Mr. Hardy has been in the school district for quite a while, and so has Dr. Schlosser, I would, I would hope that we could say with regrets that we, we want to, you know, accept their, their retirement.
You'll have that opportunity next, next Tuesday.
We'll also be accepting retirements from support staff, Jean Crass and Linda DeBello. We'll also be accepting resignations, appointments to extracurricular staff, and change of status for support staff, and we'll be addressing use of absence, course requests, and staff conferences.
Any questions about any of those items on the personnel portion of the agenda for next Tuesday? Okay, if not, we're going to move into student focus. Mrs. Stratt.
Next week, we'll be reporting on field trips that occur within 60-mile radius. We will be voting on a tuition agreement with U.S. story, transportation agreement with Spark Concepts for families, a tuition agreement with the General Foundation, and a agreement with J. Parker Investigations LLC.
I'm not sure if this is for Sue, sorry, Dr. Miller, or Dr. Phillips. How often or when does the need come up for investigative services? What kind of spurs remain for that?
Well, what happens is principals will contact Dr. Miller, and there is an indication for what. for what would be, I mean, I can talk to myself, when I was in director of people's services, principals would call and say, teachers are saying Johnny's really tired when he comes home, because he's in a car driving all the way wherever he is, but mom drives him back or dad drives him back to school. Other indications, students say things and it's overheard. It's related, Dr. Miller, to check it out. She sends letters out asking for verification of residency. But the indication that we're looking for with the agreement is just someone actually investigated a little bit for it.
So we have a point person who contacts that has three...
Yes, yes. And we will only be able to through the hours that are used.
Tell us, Dr. Miller, about approximately how many students might be, or how many situations in the course of a year might be investigated?
I'm estimating five to 10. 10 would be a very busy year. We tend to have, we do that process, the principal may hear information, they approach the family, you know, if they don't feel like they're getting the adequate information that they think they should get, they contact me, we send us some letters. If we still feel like the information we're getting may not be the correct information, that's when we'll use our investigator. So I'd estimate five to 10, 10 would be the...
And this is not uncommon, other districts do do this.
Other districts do.
How, how often does that reveal that they're not residents within the district?
We haven't worked on it yet, so...
I can't say from past experiences, quite often.
I think we're going to uncover some things and we have a strong suspicion that people are not living in the district and just not being forthright with us and we're going to find it. This gentleman actually works with many of the school districts, so he has a procedure down, it's not a relationship, it's kind of a...
Sure.
You know, just finding out where people are actually living and then having the documentation. Talk to our lawyers about the kind of documentation we need to really, you know, go to parents and say, we have the documentation, if you don't live in the district, we know it, it's then we can report. And the thing I'm interested in is that people, we try to focus on the district, we get the message that you have a private investigator now, so you're not gonna get away with it. That to me is very important too, because families share information and what districts they can get away with. And so that...
So when it occurs and somebody is found that, or we have more than, I don't want to use any type of legal term here, we're pretty sure they don't live in the district, are the costs associated with that student recoverable or do they just get locked out the door and said...
They're just told not to come back and stuff, and they need to go register in the district for their...
Okay. So we don't, we don't try to recover any of the costs?
Well, there's nothing, it's difficult to recover what we've allowed, but they would have the option to pay tuition if they'd like to stay in the district.
Okay. Thank you.
When you say they have the option to pay tuition, for, for the remainder of the school year or ongoing?
Well, I think it would be the remainder of the school year and ongoing, if they would like to stay for years or, depending on their situation.
Do we have an open tuition process?
We have that in our policy where you can pay tuition if you want to stay in the district.
Well, considering the child has, and the parents have basically placed that child into our school district, if they determine they want to stay, are we back charging for the fact that they were here without authority at that point? And, and what's to keep that child from not going to our school if we tell the parents can't do that? I'm wondering, you know...
Well, I mean, if we know the child isn't coming in, the principal knows the students, the teachers know the student.
Yeah, I know, and just feel sorry for the child at that point.
Absolutely, absolutely. But then again, we have students in our district and the more students that are in our district, they take up resources and all that. And not trying to be mean about it, but we're just trying to conserve the resources. I understand, it's a tough spot to be in.
Can we, can we have an investigated, can we find out from the solicitor if, if there are costs that are recoverable associated with this? Because if there are students who are paying tuition, we have thousands of people in the district that are paying taxes, and I, I don't feel like this is right, any way you cut it. And it is, is, it is discouraging that they can get away and then just come like, oh, sorry about that, I'll start paying tuition now. I, I think that's wrong. So I don't know if it's legal for us to recover those types of costs, whether we prorate some of the average tuition per student, but I'd be interested to see if that's legal and then if it is, I, I think we should entertain, or at least I'd be willing to entertain what that would look like in the policy.
I mean, we're taking this step basically for what you just said, but we can certainly ask if we can recover the cost. Not a legal opinion, but we allow them in our district. I don't know how we could recover, but that's certainly something we could talk to our lawyer about.
I think the conversation is married, but I appreciate that may not be...
Yep, absolutely.
What is the cost to educate a student that is legally, their parents, you know, pay taxes and things like that? So what is the cost for, like, one of our students? Just the, just the, not, not the special needs students, but regular, regular students?
Well, we estimate, every year, PDE figures out our actual instructional expense based upon our prior year, and then for the current year, we do an estimate 11.8 for secondary and 11.6 for elementary, actual instructional expense. And that's what we base some of this tuition pay is due. Then we true it up at the end of the year when we actually get the, when we get the calculation from PDE.
Dr. Amberger, I have some issues with the contract. Amidst the spelling and grammar errors, there are some things in here that are objections, one of them being in appearances. Client agrees to pay agency to attend court appearances or depositions whether agency has been subpoenaed or not, and regardless of the party requesting the appearance. So I'm not saying that anybody would pad their bill, but that would give somebody license to pad their bill, to show up at a court hearing just because they feel like it.
Which, which I agree, talking about...
Under appearances.
Under...
The first...
I'm, I'm sorry, there's, there are a couple of contracts on there.
He's talking about the detectives.
Oh, the detective, yes.
Well, as an agent of our district, they would have to appear as the witness in the district. So we would request that they show up because they're the ones who would be the one presenting the information.
But it says whether or not. It says whether we're requesting or not. I understand what you're saying, that we would request them, but that's like, that's just asking them to go $16.
This was vetted twice by our solicitor.
Well, I think part of the, the question would be is whether a subpoena is ubiquitous in these types of scenarios. And I'm pretty sure that on a district magistrate level, it wouldn't be, and it would be my understanding that this would be something that would be brought before a magistrate, not before the court, I believe. I don't know, that's my understanding, I, I could be wrong about that.
There is also, at the bottom of the page, under reports, original videotapes and or photos will not be released to client, but will remain the property of the agency until such time is required to be surrendered in court as evidence and no longer than three years from the date the investigation is terminated. We're paying for that, why aren't we getting it?
I think it's an issue of integrity of the evidence, until it gets into the court, you don't want, you know, you don't want that integrity. A chain of custody, really a chain of custody issue, I think. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an attorney here, but my experience with security, I think that's what it is purely.
So then under that heading would also come, original notes or documents considered work property will not be released and remain the property of the agency.
Because witness information that he would bring to the court. His personal...
He would have to report on what?
Absolutely. That's definitely part of the deposition.
Well, that to me is part of the check system.
Or else? Check is in cash or check is in balance?
Check and balance.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Yes.
We, we did have this vetted twice by our solicitor. We had some questions and we had some changes made, but he's, he's comfortable with it.
Did he catch the scoundrels?
I wasn't paying him to check this out.
Any additional comments about the, the section, student functions?
Can I just, can we just get like a readout every now and then just to see how this...
Absolutely, we had discussed that too, because I, I think it needs to be kept up to date on, is it worth what we're doing? But again, he's only gonna fill us from what he does, but yes, it would also give us an indication, as Dr. Miller said, how many people are actually doing this? And then if we were getting a deterrent or not. Yeah, that's part of the private, thank you, yep, that would be done.
Yeah, I reinforce the idea that, and this is something that a lot of districts do. I've had experience with it myself and, and it can be very valuable at times to, you know, otherwise it's left upon school personnel to actually try to conduct the investigation themselves, which is, you know, something they're really not trained to do, you know, to go into the community and try to, you know, go through a surveillance process if necessary, to go through and try to conduct an investigation, professional investigation. So, and to have the evidence to be able to kind of, you know, make a claim of non-residency is, you know, that's, that's a, it's a pretty important decision that has to be made, that should be based upon substantial evidence, so, you know, I think it's a good idea. And I'm assuming we're gonna use experimentally, however necessary, you know, you, I'm sorry.
I had a question, are there, related to what you just said, are there things that the district does if they suspect someone before we get to the investigator, like asking, you know, the producer of documents and things like that? Like every case isn't gonna go right there, it's gonna be...
No, we'll follow our process, but what's, what's happening now is we have some principals questioning the documents. And really, there, there's not a lot more we can do, the next step would be the detective, who's sorry, the detective who would go out and investigate. So yeah, this would not be the first step, it would be the endpoint.
That's probably a dumb question, but since he is conducting the investigation, is he gonna be armed and are we protected if there should ever be a situation where he has to draw his weapon or, you know, do something? I don't know, I just...
I did not see that in the contract, I don't believe he is armed.
I have no idea if he has a weapon or not, it's not necessarily in the contract.
Doesn't the contract have something in it about him keeping a distance so that he's never actually seen, or something like that?
It is, it is surveillance, it's not really a face to face. I mean, I could just take your experience, what the person would do would be follow you from the school and follow you outside the district and follow you to the third district over, record that, the time, be there in the morning to see you come out of the house, watch you leave with the kids, talk to the neighbors, find out, you know, have you seen these kids playing a lot? Oh, yeah, they're here all the time. Oh, did they play with your kids? Yeah. Did they talk about what school they get? So it's, it's a gathering of information that just culminates in a, you know, a court date.
And it seems like that would be covered by the indemnification as well.
Yes.
And if, you know, if he's carrying as a private citizen versus in a, or...
Yeah.
You know, those would be, I think, two separate issues. Of course, if something were to ever happen, I think that might be a good indication that we don't want to work with him depending on the circumstances too.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know...
It's worth a question and we can certainly ask him that.
Conducting business and carrying, he's conducting our business and carrying, if something happens, we may be identified, it doesn't mean we're not a student.
Thanks for that, Joe, for the conversation on that. Let's move on to curriculum committee, Dr. McLendon.
Next week, excuse me, next week we're going to be voting on the purchase of following textbooks for next school year, 2019, 2020. The book is Accounting I, Section 21, Accounting General, Peril. It's for five hardcover, I mean, hard copy textbooks and workbooks and 25 E licenses for eBooks, cost of $11,136.25 shipping. And Dr. Winters does have a copy of that book here, and where else can it be seen then, Dr. Winters? I know you have a copy here that we had in curriculum meeting, but is it on display somewhere or is it...
It's, it's not, we're not obligated to do the three day display for the...
That's changed.
That is changed.
Oh, okay.
But I do have the copy in my office, if you'd like to see it.
No, I saw it, I...
Anyone in the public, just, Dr. Winters' office is right down here.
Okay, so it's in your office?
Yeah, yeah, it's in my office. If anybody would like to see it.
Okay, and also...
You're more than welcome.
Okay, the approval form, there's attachments of the approval forms and vetting documents that they use to determine that this group...
I had a question regarding that, unfortunately, I just watched Joe Wade walk out of the room and I think he may be the person who answered the question for me. And it's specifically regarding the eBooks, I noticed that we can, I just need clarification, we can download these ones possibly, 25 versions. I would wonder why this wouldn't be more along the lines of a library book, where I check it out on my library book, library, put it on my device, after a period of time it expires, or there are always so many licenses like software from our office where it's available.
That's what it is.
Yeah, so, okay, because it sounded like you were, when I read from two of the doctors that were present, that it wasn't, you weren't able to reload it unless that was another provider. So, so what you, so the number of 25 is based on, you know, past and projected enrollments for a number of kids that, you know, take that course, you know, on average, but, you know, what you're paying for is a six-year license for 25 eBooks. It's not, you know, specified to a certain kid, so you can, you know, on an annual basis, you know, new group of students comes in, you know, so the company updates the licenses so that over six years, you're always paying the most updated year.
So at the end of course period, does that student lose their license or do they have to download it to acquire it? And to download it, they have to have someone else who already checked it out and said they're no longer using it at that point? Trying to get clarification to make sure that we're not going to get hung up by the software company that says, well, you have 25 licenses, you decide to put them on those machines, even though we use Chromebooks. Do we're going to...
Yeah, I think I understand, we would have to remove them from the other students and we would put in a, yes, yeah.
Have to make sure that we're always able to have...
We are able to have 25 licenses every year.
Yeah, yeah. And flexibility.
Yes.
You don't want them automatically sunsetted by a certain date, end of school year?
I think that would probably depend on what it looks like when it's downloaded. Like maybe, I, I know at Albright, I think, like, you had a disc that lasted for a certain amount of time, but there was also, also another class where it was just, the program was just loaded onto the computers in a certain classroom and you could access it, but once you were done in that class, you didn't have access to them anymore. So I don't know if that's gonna be similar, what it looks like, but it will probably depend on what kind of download it is.
Correct.
Thanks. Yeah, Amberger.
Any other comments about, yes?
Not about the...
So you jumped again. I was just gonna say, are there any other issues that board members would like to bring to our attention, to board's attention this time?
I just, I just wanted to share with the rest of the board and also with whatever public is watching, I, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Campbell and Mr. Dean. The student forum that Michelle, Michelle, Dave and I got to attend was a lot of fun for me. It was reliving some good old memories, but it was an excellent collection of some really amazing young men and women, and I'm just so appreciative that you guys are continuing that practice. And I think it really serves as a good lesson for us to, boy, listening constantly. And I, I think it was really enriching for me personally just to be able to listen to some of them and, and really get feedback on what they see. So thank you.
I have a few things. I'll let, I can burst and she's...
Mrs. Brage.
We missed you so much, Matt.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brage, I appreciate that comment. I just want to say that I, I saw this on March 1st in the Reading Eagle, and it said the headlines is the vast opposing, proposing federal tax credits to advance school choice. And in this, she wanted to have $5 million of taxpayer dollars, which comes from the public, to go to private, private schools or religious schools, didn't matter. And unfortunately, the members of Congress, you know, said, this is dead on arrival. So Republicans and Democrats alike in the, in the federal government realized the importance of public education... realized the importance of public education and that the dollars that are, you know, provided by taxpayers, they want public, public monies to go to public schools. So I just wanted to bring that, I don't know if anyone has seen the same thing that I saw in the paper, but Ms. DeVos, who is the Secretary of Education, has absolutely no, she never, she never went inside a public school till after she became the Secretary of Education. And, you know, I don't know if you know too much about her, but she, she probably, I think her first, her maiden name is Prince. And you know that gentleman, what he did when he was over in Iraq, that was something else. But I just want to bring that to your attention. So I'm glad that the, the people in Washington are supporting public education and not privatization. I mean, have religious schools yet? I mean, seriously? All right, well, that's.
So Pat, I, I.
I knew we were missing something.
So Pat, there's two things. Number one, rich people aren't evil just because they're rich.
I know, we said rich people are not.
You said she was.
You're not talking about evil?
You said because money, money, that's the implication.
I'm not saying nothing about evil.
Okay. So now this, this thing was done because they knew it wasn't going to pass Congress. This is the typical trick by the Republicans to make it look to their base like they're going to do something. And you know they're not going to do it. They know it's not going to pass, so they throw it out there and now they can go out and campaign contributions.
Now, who is that base? I'm forgetting who it's size.
Who is that base?
You're a registered Republican, Jay, so pray your stuff under the law.
Yeah, I'm saying, I don't, I don't support that at all. So don't say she's doing that to the, to their base.
Absolutely.
Were there any other comments or topics that we'd like?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. We missed you. In the past, I know we've had cell towers at the senior high school. And over the years, that became something, we no longer had that contract because I think it was Verizon, AT&amp;T. We didn't need our facilities for spring. And there was a recent article, and my friend Jerry provided to us that there was a new kid in town who was flipping, putting up relay stations for their cell service. I didn't know if there was a way to contact them. I don't know the name, Jerry would probably be able to provide it to see if we could become part of their group, because we definitely have some open areas. Second thing was, I know we haven't had an update from Matt and the TIPS programmers, but I didn't know what was going on for the summer, if they need anything from us or if they're already on their way for a committed program. We had a discussion today with SISPA and TIPS, and understanding is they will bring a budget forward in the next couple of weeks?
Right, and I was, we have a business function committee meeting on Tuesday. So I was going to address what our discussion for today, how SISPA handles contracts and going forward. But given that it's working more than.
They've always been a little bit behind, a little slow, SISPA, you know, in getting us the contract. Because I think Matt likes to start his enrollments as early as, you know, mid-March, so.
The enrollments, yeah. The enrollments are open. We're getting those letters out, you know, for our ESL students and also our Title I students. We do have a board meeting tomorrow, and I will just relay the message to the board of TIPS that the school board is asking if there's any need. So we appreciate that, but enrollment is opening already. And we'll close in May. Besides that budget for TIPS, do we also, is there other documentation that we can look at as far as, you know, some statistics or how successful the program is? Yes, if that's something that the board would like to see, that's something that's generated every year. I would like to see that, I guess some others would. I'll relay that message as well.
Yes, Mr. Brad.
Hey, you have three to set.
Yes, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss any of my other friends. I know we have spoken about in the past about solar roofs and programs. I didn't know if there are any currently out there from the state or the feds that would help us to potentially moderate, modify solar water systems. But we do have a lot of open roof space. The last discussion we had was a company that came out where Lorraine, and it would be based on the hill behind One Creek. And they had given some options about purchasing it outright and having some savings, leasing it. I believe it was a kind of a lease-to-buy option. There were three or four options that would give us different savings based on our options. I don't think the board really had much of a case for it.
I'm just thinking more of the roof panels, because I know there's, there are more and more commercial industrial buildings where you'll, if you do an aerial, you know, view from Google and you're looking at it, besides the fact you have a big green roof conversion in cities, you'll see a lot of buildings that are now placing solar panels. You would never even think it's, you know, a building, you would see that. But it's a, a lot of your warehouses, you'll see that because it's just an open platform for that.
Understood. Unfortunately, we had some roof issues. So putting soil panel on top of some of our roofs. We can look into that. Not a problem. We can certainly look into that.
Dave, I have a couple of things I want to recognize, but are you, are you talking yet? Did you?
No, no, we're good.
No?
At the voting session.
Okay, so you don't have anything?
No, we're good.
So just a couple of things. I want to thank Dr. Miller and all of the folks who were involved in the health fair. I don't know if you have names you want to call out. I couldn't remember everybody's name, but they did a great job.
Our nursing staff coordinated with Diane Sorevaki, Kami Hughes, Rosanna Lee, nurses, Therese, Deb, Lisa Delancey, Sue Ten, Sherry Matusio, and Doc Lee. The all-day nurses, they took, really coordinated open this a year and a half in the office. So coming together, we're very happy with it.
They did a great job, so thank you.
I think Diane's here, right?
Yeah, sure.
So she's back then?
Okay.
Thank you.
It was my pleasure. It was a great success.
I think I happened to attend with Allison, the Youth Art Month at the Exeter Library, which was really cool. Congratulations to Tim DeWalden, who spoke that art's pretty incredible. Allison's kids made the newspaper. But that was very well done, and I'm so glad to see that we continue to support, you know, the arts and music in Exeter. I saw that Mr. Campbell left, and I think Mr. Dean is here. But I want to congratulate the high school for the efforts around FON and the work that the students put into raising close to 17,000, maybe over 17,000 dollars.
It's over 17. There's still change from a stall week that, that is being counted. And those numbers, it's likely to go up a bit from there. And they can still continue to raise funds throughout the year.
Jerry says if you get it about 17.5, it'll take you 18, so.
I thought you said he was matching.
He is a match.
And then finally, this was an issue that really wasn't an issue, but there was a concern parent had to do with the group going to Pittsburgh for the TSA and event. And Tom Campbell and the high school staff and Dr. Phillips did a good job of scrambling to find $4,600 to make sure that those kids who've worked all year get to go to this event. So I appreciate that effort that you guys put into that. Thank you. And the kids' efforts too.
And they'll be here to show off when I.
Okay. Just want to announce that immediately following this workshop, the board will be going into executive session for personnel and legal matters, and we are adjourned.